And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Does anyone know about Dan? Bill, should we wait for Dan? Do you know if he's close?
I can text him, see if he's close. He didn't say that he wasn't coming. The only person I know is Mike had sent an email, but I will send Dan a message.
We'll take one minute.
Absolutely. The mayor said that he's not feeling well. He's right here, Councilor Kennedy.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally.
Here.
Counselor Delabad.
He's asked to be excused.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers. Counselor Riche. I'm sorry, sir. Thank you. Counselor Scamperly.
Here.
Quorum present.
Counselor Powers is unable to attend tonight due to a work commitment and is asked to be excused also. Do we have a consensus for Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike? Okay. We have three presentations included on our agenda tonight from the city comptroller, Angela Gray. However, I understand that the acting city assessor, Stephen Teal, is here and would also like to make a brief presentation to council. Is there a consensus to amend the agenda to include this?
Yes.
Yes. So Angela Gray will be up first, I think. Or Steve, you're going up first? Okay. Okay, wonderful.
Yes, I'm the acting assessor.
Acting.
And I'm helping Amy now and put things together at this time. And she can bring more up-to-date. A lot of them are calling in, we're doing. And Jennifer and Andrea have been putting together. And in between, Amy's trying to put these out. Oh, it's going. And we'll just bring it up-to-date from Amy. I'll tell you what we have right now and what we're looking down the road. I have two towns. I work in other towns. And be done probably well, hopefully by Thursday, so I can put more time into to fill up these that want to talk to myself and Amy.
We're lucky that you, you know, took the extra time to come here and help us from a difficult situation. And you both have a very difficult job. So, thank you.
So just real quick, what we have so far, we just started meetings this week. So we met in the afternoon Monday and Tuesday. And then last week, and then we met all day last Friday with everybody. So we had a total, as far as owners or representatives of the property owners parcel, we had forty total people. Forty total people, but we also had some multiple properties. So just going by people, parcels are going to be higher in these numbers. The total parcels that we did look at was fifty-seven. Of those fifty-seven, the vast majority, we did come to some kind of an agreement with them as they presented documentation and reasons for a difference in the assessed value. So that is a good thing. So last week, we had a total of fourteen hours of meetings completed. We've got about sixty additional hours that the scheduling is being worked on right now. So basically, what it comes down to at this point, understanding that it is a moving number, because as we're here right now, there are people probably calling and emailing as we speak, adding to the waitlist. But at this point, there are eighty-five people that are on the list to be scheduled. And of the slots that are out there still, there's five slots remaining, which is not enough. But as Mr. Teal already alluded to, we're going to be looking to add some more times and slots as we move forward in the process to try to get everybody in to see the assessor if they so desire prior to grievance day on the thirteenth of June.
Yeah, just so you know, it's June thirteenth. And they put a couple more hours into that. And if it's more than that, but anybody for the complaint or grievance, they should come before that night at eight if they have anything else. And it's up to the border reel to move it up down the road. Not that night, but days down. Everybody has to come by eight. And a lot of people, I believe, right now, there's appointments now with border review, right?
Yeah, there are some appointments right now. Those are being scheduled as well. People can either make an appointment or they can go on standby. And if it does go longer than the normal allowed, a lot of time during that day on the thirteenth, if we do have to go further, as Mr. Teal also said, you do have to be here and you would also have to have your RP Form 524 turned in. And then you may potentially meet on a following day, but you do have to have that in and be present.
And you talk about the 524, it's only four pages. And everybody talking on the phone, Jennifer, Andrea, Amy too. If they fill those out, which ninety-nine percent, they've been joining really good. And so we can, we've got our fifteen minutes, but you know, we can everything in front of us. So we can make it work. So everything is going pretty good here.
Do we think everybody's going to get hurt, that wants to get hurt?
Prior to grievance day? Is that what you're talking about, Dan?
Well, including grievance day.
If everybody comes on Grieve Day and it doesn't occur to anybody else, they have to sign by eight.
Okay.
And fill out the 524.
Sure, bring it with them.
Definitely bring it with them. So it could roll into another day.
Okay.
Or days, you know, down the road. There've been a couple of places where that those things have happened.
So we're prepared to make sure this process works.
Right.
Okay.
The people who work for you, yeah, they want to make sure everything's done also on that side.
Sure. Well, I can't thank you, I can't thank Amy and city staff enough. I know you've been putting in your time, trying to squeeze this in and get it in. And it must be very stressful. And it's very stressful for the citizens out there too. I think just telling them that you will be heard is a little bit of relief, at least tonight. And from what I've heard, there is agreements coming out of these meetings and people are coming out happier, much more happy than they were. And I appreciate it. So, okay.
Thanks for reading me, because she knows the day before. So everything is right in front of us, you know. So it's right in front of us.
When GARR did their assessments, did they go solely by square footage and sales? Because, and the reason I ask that is because I talked to the old assessor that worked for the city. And they had a different type of system where they talked about the construction of a house. So if a house has the old two-by-six flooring and things like that, as opposed to today, it's two-by-ten or two-by-felves. Did they have actually two-by-fours, two-by-sixes in the walls? Or did they have plank walls with no insulation? Are these houses being looked at with that sort of consideration? And were they with GARR?
I don't know. Go ahead.
When GARR did their initial step, they sent out a description of the properties, from siting to type of heat and a lot of different details. If the property owners came back with that short survey and they did changes, GARR incorporated those changes into that property and that was taken into consideration. If they did not, or nothing's perfect, so I'm not saying that they captured everything, but I think they captured most of it. But as they move forward in the process, if they submitted things to GARR because the assessor doesn't know, nobody knows what's in your house without having pictures. So we don't know if your windows are bad. We don't know if you don't have insulation. We don't know if you have a mud floor in a crawl space or if it's a full basement or if it's finished. So a lot of that has been the reasons why some of these assessed values have gone down is because sometimes we don't know, as GARR didn't know what they didn't know if they weren't told specifically for things inside that. But a lot of those kind of things are the reasons why when it got a second look, once it moved beyond GARR to here, if we saw pictures or we saw some other things that the property owner could bring to light from their perspective and from inside, then that is definitely taken into consideration for the value. Yes.
I want to say a big thank you to Mr. Teal and the staff. They have put a lot of effort. And there has been also a lot of pressure from the public. I have no words but words to say about it. I mirror all your opinions on, to appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Would it help? Do we have these instructions for our citizens, our residents on our website? You know, the forms? Yeah.
The forms are available in the website. Also, they can pick it up here.
Okay.
And if you had seen, Andrea also did a presentation on the news that was about the steps to follow.
Yes. Okay.
Just four pages.
Four pages.
Very nice on the staff with it. Four pages.
Yep.
Amy, do you want to add anything about the forms, where to locate it?
The forms, they are on our website. They are also, if you went directly to the New York State website, we have them available. I have them available, Room Seven, when we're not in meetings. I have them in Room Six. They're out in the hallway by Room Six. You know, if you need them, they're there. If you really need the instructions, they're there. The instructions are as long as the form. If you really just don't get overwhelmed by the fact that it's four pages, really, the first page has the most information. And if you don't know your tax map number or you're not sure about the tentative role in your values, we can assist with that piece of it. But we would just ask that the rest of it, you definitely can fill out. It's your contact information. It's your address and those kind of things. So don't be overwhelmed by four pages. I think directions, if you looked at the New York State directions, they might confuse you rather than help you, to be honest with you. But we do have those available too.
Well, thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. You got a busy guy this time of year. Take care.
Thank you.
So next, I believe, city comptroller Angela Gray is going to do her presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I have three presentations tonight. The first is just a recap of where we are in terms of the budget versus actual on April thirtieth. So there's nothing for you in your packet this evening to look at. But I just kind of wanted to walk you through a couple assurances here that we've been watching the spending, monitoring the budget versus actual. We are only one-third through the year. So as of right now, there's nothing I would caution you. We're still making sure the payroll dollars are appropriate, which they are. Certainly watching cash flow. And we spent the month of April collecting property taxes that just ended on the fifteenth. So it's been very busy in the comptroller's office. In terms of revenue, where we are revenue-wise, in the general fund is expected somewhat comparative to the year before. And I would say I can pass on to Mr. Buhari a side-by-side comparison of each of the years to distribute to council line by line of what we've collected. Overall, I think we are on track for where we would anticipate being this time of year. The water fund is revenue-wise on pace with where we would think that would be. There's a three-point-three percent increase of revenue in the water fund. However, we did do a price increase there, greater than three percent. So I can work that math backwards and say we may be down a little bit towards budget. And the same is the case with the sewer fund. We have an overall increase on our sewer of thirteen-point-six percent of revenue. So I'm happy to forward that information on.
Please.
You're welcome. So moving on to presentation number two are your sales tax dollars. And so what we're looking at on the sales tax presentation is a rolling twelve of the last twelve months of sales tax, which runs June twenty-twenty-two through May twenty-twenty-three. You can see that our target per month to me, our budget is $217,000. And we have an average collection in this twelve-month period of $205,000. Overall, in the media, you can, if you've read the article, sales tax collections are down. The month of May is representative mostly of spending in the month of March. And if we're talking about monthly sales tax, if we are talking about quarterly sales tax, that would be the months of December, January, February, tying that to our own lives. We have taxes due January thirty-first, you have heating bills. So it's not uncommon, I would say, for this month to show what is showing and that's a down in collection. So we are hopeful, looking forward, that we'll see these numbers come back up because our average rolling twelve is 205,000, about 12,000 behind where we should be. So any questions?
On the general fund estimated budget illustrations, twenty-twenty-four, are you going to?
That is next.
Okay.
Okay. So this is a bigger presentation that I wanted to walk council through. We are starting budgeting processes internally as soon as tomorrow. Everybody behind me is very excited. So, and we really need some guidance from council as to what we should be anticipating for the ability on taxes. I do know that the assessed values are still up in the air until the final numbers come down. But looking at our tentative assessment rule, the city has an assessed value of 370 million, which is up from 286 million, I believe. So starting from the top of this page, what you see are the appropriations that we budgeted in the 2023 budget. Now, this is all hypothetical. There is, we have not started the process. But I want to walk council through what I think is a, it is a hypothetical, but most likely a realistic situation. We do know we're going to have salary increases. The contracts are calling for three-and-a-half percent. We also have step increases. So that's going to increase naturally. Our spending has to increase some because the cost of goods are going up as well. The debt service is an estimate. We have some debt falling off. We just paid off one ban. I believe it was still in a ban situation. But we added the ready bond of 4.1 million. So there's a slight change anticipated in debt service. But overall, we're starting with a 2023 budget of 3.9 million. If we simply roll those numbers forward with a very conservative increase, we would need to fund 14.2 million dollars of appropriations. Using a sales tax number, we have 2.7 in the thirteen budget, I believe. If we say 2.6 million here, the hundred thousand dollars isn't really going to be difference, isn't going to be earth-shattering or solve what's to come. We will receive state aid from the state of New York. We, I would anticipate, this is again council's ultimate decision, receiving money from the water sewer fund. We do know we're going to receive money from CHIPS. But every dollar we put in the budget for CHIPS, there's an equal expenditure. So whether that's 500,000 or 10 million, it will not impact the budget. And then looking at all the other revenue that we have from internally generated via the court reimbursements, Marina, VRAK, Arena, all of those are totaling about 1.9 million. So this gives us potential revenue of seven-and-a-half million. We have to offset that against our 4.2 million dollars of appropriations. So we're looking to raise about 6.6 to 6.7 million dollars from property taxes. That's the only revenue bucket not filled in in this illustrative example. We had a 2022, 2023, rather, tax levy of 4.7 million. The preliminary calculation of your 2% tax cap, which council voted to not exceed last year, will allow you to garner about $92,000 of additional tax revenue. That would allow 4.8 million dollars of real property tax levy, still leaving a budget shortfall of 1.8 million. This example does include some assumptions because some of the information that we need to calculate some of these numbers more precisely will not be available starting in July. The health insurance has been presumed to be flat. We're currently working towards health insurance and finding the most suitable plan for the employees. Right now, we've had several meetings on that. And this does not include any appropriations for capital projects. So I would say to you that this is your bare-bones budget for 2024, what it could potentially look like. So I've done in the yellow about five different examples of where we could potentially go with the tax rate. So just to walk you through the yellow chart, if council makes a decision to leave the levy equal to where it was in 2022, which I apologize, that should say 2023, then we would have a levy of 4.7 million. That would leave the citizen tax rate at $12.80 per 1,000. The CTL is a huge estimate right here. We will never be able to get to the final usage of constitutional tax limit until all three budgets are set or drafted, which would be the general water and sewer. So I've used some assumptions in this model for the CTL that are modest and very similar to prior years. But last year, being the 2023 calculation, we had a significant exclusion there that I'm not sure will repeat itself. And until it does, I'm not willing to put it in the calculation. So this is conservative. The revenue shortfall, if we, if council decided to leave the levy equal, would be a revenue shortfall of 1.9 million. If you were to just raise taxes equal to your allowed 2% tax cap, we would still have a shortfall of 1.8 million. And we would be using 71% of the constitutional tax limit. Another theory would be to say, okay, let's put the city's usage of the constitutional tax limit back on the fringe of the danger zone, which is 80% of the usage. If you did that, you would still have a revenue shortfall of 1.2 million. So if the rate was kept the same as 2023, which is 16.59 cents per 1,000, we would be able to have a tax levy in the city of approximately 6.1 million. We'd be using 93% of the constitutional tax limit. Again, it won't, that's an estimate. And that would leave a revenue shortfall of almost a half a million dollars, little over half a million. The fifth scenario says, let's raise the taxes enough to balance the budget, which we couldn't do because under this model, it exceeds the constitutional tax limit. So again, the constitutional tax limit is a very much a fluid number until the budgets are set. But it does take the drafting of all three budgets, general water sewer, in order to get a very precise calculation on that. These exclusions built in here only include non-revenue-producing debt and capital expenditures. So again, it is a modest calculation. So looking for some direction to our city manager, we will begin drafting budgets very soon in talking about what 2024 could possibly look like because I do feel we need all of that time. But obviously, the tax rate is a pretty critical factor in the general fund budget. Are there any questions?
Was 2022 the tax rate 16.58?
That should be 2023, my apologies. Yeah.
Yeah, 2022, we were under 16.
You were, yeah, my apologies.
We were less than Messina.
That should be 2023.
Does the amount of CTL exhaustion include the exclusions?
It does. It includes exclusions for capital expenditures and debt that is non-revenue-producing. That's included in the general fund primarily. So there are some exclusions built into that calculation based on historical averages.
Purchases include any fund balance?
It does not. The reason why it doesn't is I propose to you that your fund balance is already in a potentially delicate position. At the end of 2023, the anticipated fund balance is 2.1 million. We then, in March, appropriated another half a million dollars out of there. So that's bringing that to a little above 1.6 million. It would be council's decision to, when Mr. Buhari puts his budget out there, to decide how much, if any, of that fund balance they're comfortably using.
And does it include the same amount of, what do you call, transfers from water and sewer?
It does not. The transfers from water and sewer last in the 2023 budget were over $1 million. And this 2024 illustration pulls the number back in line to where it has been historically that we've been working to back away from.
Which was?
It's in this 2024 illustration as $850,000.
It was 1 million, was it, or was it more than that?
To balance that budget, we added $330,000 to this number. I did not bring my budget copy, but I can email that to Mr. Buhari as a reminder to councils to what that number was.
This is, this is great information to have going ahead, to make a decision on the budget. Yeah.
It's good to keep spending now. Now, I mean, it's hypothetical. You don't know what we're going to be at until some of these numbers come in. So it's good to be looking in this direction. But at this point, it's, you know, watch your spending.
It is good to be looking in this direction. I would just draw your attention to the first section of appropriations to maintain the staffing, current staffing. To maintain the staffing, current staffing in the city, which was at a cost of 6.1 million dollars in the general fund this year. We know that number is going to be more. And with that number becomes the fringe benefits are equally tied to each other. So if we increase one, the other goes up. If we decrease one, it goes down as well. So that is a significant part of the appropriations is the personnel. And so it is good to look at, but I think we have some significant planning to do as to how to overcome, even if the challenge is a million dollars versus a million point eight, it still represents a significant challenge to us to balance that budget.
Definitely gives us a lot to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so this brings us to public appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address city council. Please come down to the podium and you'll have five minutes.
Yes, good evening, Michael Tulley, 214 Hamilton Street. And I appreciate the opportunity to address council as a citizen tonight. I, I thank, as you did, Angela, for the information shared with you tonight and projecting what a preliminary, their preliminary budget might look like for next year. In earlier presentation this year, Angela suggested council consider establishing a, a fund balance policy. And to my knowledge, there's been no discussion about that since that suggestion was made. I'd like to offer a suggestion for a policy that the fund balance for the general fund, you know, targets 17%, which I think is maybe Angela's target, two months worth of spending, but have an acceptable range of 10% of budget to 25% of budget. So if you have a, you know, a floor of 10%, so in other words, 1.4 million, you got a little bit of use of fund balance still that might be able to help you next year or in multiple years. And just, but if it's not too late, possible reconsideration of the use of $500,000 of fund balance through this year and restore that to make use of that in the 2024 budget and, and pick up that $500,000, which is the expense to that in this year. I, I think this presentation from, from, from Angela highlights the need to keep that fund balance for flexible use. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Wendy Hamilton, Morris Street. I'm a resident of Augsburg. I just have some questions and I, I'm gonna frame this by saying I am not totally familiar with your zoning laws and all of that. But I have some questions and it's about 420 Lafayette Street. When this first came up, I did ask the question about the recommendation that was made by the New York Financial Restructuring Board about lifting and shifting our properties to the land bank. And along with that recommendation, there was money associated with it, a possible discretionary one-time grant of $325,000. So I was just wondering if there was any discussion about, you know, going ahead with that recommendation because to me, 420 is a pretty good piece of property that the land bank could do something with. But I'm also confused by the property because it has a commercial, it's designated as commercial vacant property, but it's in an M D R neighborhood, which is this moderate density zone, and which was a pretty interesting designation because it was looking to the future use of those large homes. And so that type of zoning specifically gave homeowners the ability to take that single family home, make it a multiple family dwelling, you know, or, or a B and B, that sort of thing, which is pretty cool. But this 420 Lafayette is designated commercial. So I don't, is, is that on purpose? Was that something that was overlooked when, you know, it got back to the city? Is it time to relook at that zoning? Because seems to me that would be an odd thing in a, in a residential neighborhood. I still can't find out any good reason why St. Joseph's was allowed to abandon that property or how it went out of their hands and then abandoned, and then they were able to build something brand new on Linden. I mean, I know that's history, but if we don't look back historically and learn from some mistakes, then we're going to repeat them in the future. So the other thing about that property is that it's almost two acres. And I'm wondering if city council ever considered subdividing the property before sending it to auction and making it, you know, three or four lots. Maybe somebody wants to build on a single lot and not on two acres. It's just questions. I'm not, you know, and I think that's probably the problem with some of this process is that there is always questions up in the air and you can't dig deep enough to find what the answers are, whether it's historically done or you have to wade through all the minutes. But I would ask you to, and I think that the initial decision to put them back at auction is a very fair one, both the property that was talked about last week on Morris Street and this one. Give another round of opportunity for people to bid on it. But I would want you to consider or think about, if you haven't already, subdividing that property and looking at this commercial aspect of it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This Brenda Hill, Grove Street. I'm back tonight. Last week, I had a guy come in and mow my lawn. Two more needles on my lawn. I'm so tired of this. Is there anything that can be done with the drug house on Grove Street? Now it's turned into a campground.
Brenda, what's, what's the address?
11 Grove. It's turned into a campground now. There's a car parked in the backyard you're sleeping in. Multiple cars in the front yard that they've been sleeping in on the front yard. There's a truck in the yard with no plates on it. If that was my car, it would be gone by now. I'm really tired of finding needles in my yard. I'm tired of it. I'd like to know when something is going to start being done with the drug houses, especially the one in my neighborhood. That's where I'm at.
I wish that I could give you an answer, but we need more police. We need our narcotics unit, like our investigations aren't fully up and running, if at all. I'm not making excuses, but we, we need more police officers.
I totally get that because, you know, like I said the last time, I called the police station to report this by, per somebody here in City Hall. She told me to call the police station. I called the police station, I put the complaint in, and guess who I was talking to? That drug control officer answering the phone at the police station. When are we gonna untie this man's hands, Mr. Mayor? When are we gonna do it?
Hersa, to have more police, you need more money. And we don't have the money and we just went over how the shortfall we have. So that's, that's how you make everything work. That's how you keep all the services and.
So what we're waiting for is we're waiting now, now St. Patrick's Day, we had a, a car back out of the driveway and run into a guy. He hit him with the truck. Now are we waiting for the gun to come back out like it did the other day out to the shopping center? Are we waiting for a gun? In my neighborhood, where my grandson comes, where there's children playing? Is that what we're waiting for?
We're waiting.
Or are you gonna untie this man's hands? And get some ones to protect our citizens.
What, what is the solution? What is the solution other than having the resources to develop that riverfront, bring people in, increase the city's revenue, taxes, not only for the, the city, also for the school? I mean, they have a huge budget. They need more children in there. You need to, you can't, that's not gonna survive with graduating 100 children. So, so we need to increase our population and we have the resource of that waterfront to do it. But we never have enough money to get it developed.
So once you get that waterfront developed, what are you gonna have then? People are gonna come in, vote. They're gonna enjoy the waterfront. What's past the waterfront? You got a couple of restaurants.
You need housing on the river. You need condominiums, uh, single homes. We need it all, all along the river.
Don't you think that we need more policemen to protect it here first?
Then you will have more policemen because you'll have more tax revenue.
Where's the jobs? Where's the jobs you, you told me back on Facebook a couple of years ago that you were gonna get in here?
Where's the jobs?
Yeah, you told me that you were bringing jobs in here.
You're not gonna bring any jobs in here at $60 per thousand. Nobody with any common sense, a successful business, a factory would ever build with that kind of expense.
That's what you told me on Facebook.
I did not tell you that.
You did.
Do you know, you coordinate with the chief of police and start addressing that property? Sure. Particularly the car that's, that isn't licensed. I mean, but more importantly, I mean, we can't talk about individual cases, but I assume it's being addressed.
Yes, councilman, I think, I did speak to the police chief about it and he did send out an officer. And it's in the, it's in the works.
So it's sad, it's sad. You're gonna put all that money into the park and let's pass the park, nothing. Then you got drugs and needles laying all over town, but you haven't got enough. You got the, the drug officers answering the phone at the police station. Pretty sad, pretty sad. But you know, you must know what it's like to have people camp out in the car.
I do.
You must know how that is.
I do.
Is that comfortable for you?
It's, it's, it's very sad. It's very sad for that woman and her condition. That's, that's what I felt.
It wasn't very comfortable for your people, was it?
Wasn't comfortable for the whole neighborhood.
Do you think it's any more comfortable for my neighborhood?
Well, I'm saying is, we all live in.
In my neighborhood. I don't know if she was or not, but I have drugs involved in my neighborhood. I never know what's going on when I open my door.
The last big drug bust was across, when they had the big one, four years ago. That was across, that was across the street from my house in an apartment building. And then that was like five in the morning. And at 10:00 AM, the sheriffs brought those people back to their apartment. So you had to hire a lot of police when they, the government doesn't keep them locked up. You have to hire even more. You know, that's, that's.
It's sad, it's sad that we don't have the police that we need.
Sir, I think you wanna come up?
Thank you. My name's Dale Coats and I live at 318 Clark Street. A couple of quick things. My family and I attended the Pride and Beautification Commission program that they had here probably 10 days ago. It was wonderful. It was for honoring the hometown heroes, the military. It was a very nice presentation. My grandson Connor Badlam was one of those. We're very proud of Connor and he's just joined the Air Force a couple of years ago and beginning his military career. In fact, a gentleman sitting behind me helped him in some work ethic issues through, uh, King Brown, uh, through Department of Public Works, through a summer program. But anyway, Connor has just returned from overseas deployment where he received the Army Achievement Medal for meritorious service. And for that, we're very proud of him. Which brings me to another little subject. I don't want to say I'm not proud of, but it's the signs for the city. The welcome to Augsburg signs and the companion service club signs. They're not in very good shape. The welcome to Augsburg signs could certainly use a good coat of paint. They look, honestly, they look goddamn shabby. If I were a visitor, we all see it every day. And do we really see it? Maybe so, maybe not. But I'm certain that visitors to our city see it. And if you want to put your best foot forward, signs are important. And especially the ones at the city's edge. So I would implore whoever is responsible for those signs to take some action. I know the one, uh, by United Helpers, the service club signs, it's terrible, absolutely terrible. It, it looks like a decrepit city. Welcome to our decrepit city by those, those signs. They're falling apart, broken off. They just don't look very good. So I would implore city council to spend a few dollars, put some man hours into improving those signs for the good of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a few comments. You guys are gonna read my letter today about the property 420 Lafayette Street. I'm half of the party that would like to buy that property with my neighbors. You said that I found out that it's gonna go back up for auction on June 7th for 25,000. So it went up for 61, nobody bid. It went up for 45, nobody bid. It's gonna go up for 25. We'll find out if somebody bids on it or not. The letter you're gonna read today, we're offering 10 grand, 10 grand this time instead of eight. We're not gonna go up anymore. 10 grands are max. If you got the email I sent this morning with a picture, aerial picture of that property, a quarter to an eighth, a third of that property is buried. The basement, all the cement from around that property was buried under there. The parking lot was buried under there. I don't know if a lot of you knew that, but that's all. If you look at that picture, you can see where the concrete or the blacktop has been pushed into the basement where they're starting to fill it up with debris. I talked to a couple of contractors. It's gonna cost from 100 to 250,000 dollars to have that remediated over two months. So like the, like the house on Morris Street, they're gonna put money into it, but it's gonna cost money to get it fixed. We want that property. We're gonna bring tax money into the city, but we're not gonna pay a lot of money for that property because we're gonna put a lot of money into it. It costs the city approximately $8,000 sent in for the last five years to keep that property up for mowing and snow removal. The property's been vacant for 11, we've been there 11 years. So that property's been vacant for at least 11 years. I don't know how much before that. So you're keeping up with the snow removal and the grass for 11 years. So I don't know what the cost of that was, but I know for the last five years, it was 10, up 10 grand. So we're gonna alleviate the grass, the snow, the upkeep, the insurance, and we're gonna make stuff on that property. We're not gonna divulge what we're gonna do to it, but it's gonna bring stuff into the city. So you're gonna put it up for auction. I wish you would sell it to us. 10 grand is our final offer. If we don't get for 10, we'll let it go to auction. If nobody bids on it, you come back to us, we might not offer you 10. We might offer you 10 again. So it's, you know, it is what it is.
Chip, I got a question for you.
Sure.
You know what? I asked you before what you plan on doing and I, and I understand you want to keep it on lower. And, and so you didn't tell me just so everybody knows.
Right, nobody knows except for me and my neighbor.
You know, in terms of a timeframe, you know, a lot of times when we put out an RFP on a property, which was our original plan to do that property, we ask, we, we, we try and actually sign a contract for a timeframe for developing, things like that. And so can you just, what do you think for a timeframe for developing that property? If we sold you that property?
Yeah, I don't know because we'd have to get somebody in there to look at. Like I said, getting the basement and everything taken out of there. We don't know what that, the actual cost, we just have estimates. And it could be a year, two years, but at least you won't own it. You're not, it's no removal, you're not taking care of it.
I mean, that's the problem we want to develop, you know what I mean?
Right, and I mean, it's been there for how long? It's been vacant for five.
Yep. Yep.
Same goes with there before that. Right. And, and you've been up to auction twice. Nobody even showed up to bid on it.
Yeah.
And now you're going down to twenty-five. You think, I don't know, it's a, maybe they will, maybe they won't. If somebody bids twenty-five, they can have it, you know what I mean? But they're also going to have to, I, I think it's been put out and advertised as shovel ready. That property's not shovel ready. Not even, it's shovel, shovel ready to be cleaned and remediated, yes. But somebody cannot just go in there and start building. It's impossible. Never happens. That picture, I, you all must have looked at that picture I sent this morning. Yeah, it's not a pretty picture. So.
And did you do your homework that I asked you?
I'm, I'm in the process of getting stuff taken care of. So, I, I just wanted to speak my piece. You're going to, they're going to read the letter, so now.
I've read the letter and I've looked at your survey and Wendy brought up some of the same questions that I had for you.
Right. And if, if it wants to go to the land bank, I mean, they could bid twenty-five thousand.
I'd rather see private developer. I mean, we did that once with synagogue. Uh, council refused to sell it and turns around, that ends up going to the land bank. That money could have been used for somebody else. We had a private investor. So personally, I'd like to see a private investor, but I'd like to know that it's going to happen. You know, rather than just buy it and sit on it for another ten or twenty years.
There's plans. That's all I can say.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And this brings us to corres- correspondence. I believe we have two letters.
Mayor, just for the record, I do not see any hands raised remotely. Just so you're aware. You're, you're fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Jump ahead.
Dear Mr. Buhari, on behalf of our organization, I am writing to express our appreciation to the city for issuing a proclamation that recognizes United Helpers for serving the community for one hundred and twenty-five years. We also want to convey our gratitude for the longstanding water and sewer services provided by the city to the United Helpers facility located at eight one zero one State Highway sixty-eight Augsburg. The for-profit division of United Helpers Sparks Incorporated is interested in exploring the possibility of collaborating with the city to provide increased water and sewer services beyond the city limits towards Moorestown. We understand that this is a complex undertaking that involves several steps. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that this idea be received positively as we explore options to work together toward making this a reality. At this time of year, there are several state and federal grants available that may be applicable to our collaboration and we are committed to bringing resources to the table to support our joint efforts. We believe that this partnership could be an additional revenue source for the city as well as meet the needs of our growing services. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. Best regards, Todd Amon. And I have one more, mayor?
Yes.
City council members, we are writing to further our inquiries relating to the property at four twenty Lafayette Street. Previously, an offer of eight thousand dollars was made. Since that time, we have met with our neighbors at seven oh nine Franklin Street and together we would like to present a new offer. As previously stated, the property has twice been to auction with no offers. Additionally, the city of Augsburg has incurred the cost and liabilities for the maintenance of this parcel over the past five years. We believe our offer represents a good faith effort to relieve the city of this burden while also putting the land back on the city tax rolls. It has been suggested that certain council members would like to know our purposes in terms of future plans for the development of this property. We feel it is premature to share such plans as the total cost of implementing even a small scale project is contingent upon additional costs relating to the remediation of the land and also costs connected to legal fees in the event there is an exhumation of those possibly buried on the property. At the least, we would hope to erect a three-car garage on a portion of the land. We can also say with certainty it is our primary goal to reunite the land with the former rectory, thus preserving the historical integrity of the city landmark. We are also aware of another offer made on city, on property in the city, an offer that received no scrutiny and was met with immediate sentiments of approval at the last council meeting. We are unsure why our offer was not given the same courtesy. With these things in mind, we are offering ten thousand dollars for the property at four twenty Lafayette. We look forward to hearing your thoughts and we appreciate your consideration going forward. Walter and Renee Bracy, Harold and Rachel Kent.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have our consent agenda. The claims as enumerated in general fund warrant number nine dash twenty twenty-three in the amount of five hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents. And library warrant number nine dash twenty twenty-three in the amount of zero dollars. And capital fund warrant number nine dash twenty twenty-three in the amount of eight hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. And community, uh, development fund warrant number nine dash twenty twenty-three in the amount of zero dollars. And community renewal fund warrant number nine dash twenty twenty-three in the amount of zero, zero dollars. As audited, be in the same or hereby ordered pay. I saw move.
I guess, question.
Counselor Scamp, please. Thank you, sir.
You know, I'm looking at legal fees here, uh, rolling over twelve grand. It just seems like every consent agenda. You know, I know we got presented the budget earlier and Mr. Buhari keeps warning us about slowing down these legal fees. Personally, I agree with him. Uh, are we on budget for law or are we going over? And you may not have the answer to that. It's just, it just seems like every other consent agenda is swamped with legal fees. It personally, I think are unnecessary, but.
I do have the answer. I just need to find that department. We have consumed thirty percent of that budget year to date. So we had a budget of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and year to date, we have spent forty-two thousand. I'm sorry, fifty-two thousand dollars of that budget.
Okay. Could we get a breakdown of what, exactly what it was for? So that whether or not it was, what, if it was a project, if it was for whatever reason?
No problem. I'll provide that to Mr. Buhari and send over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Kathy, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Rege?
Yes.
Counselor Scampely?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, we do not have any appointments tonight, so that brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a resolution calling for a public hearing on the city's community development block grant for the preliminary engineering grant for East David Street.
I'll second that.
Now, this would set the public hearing for June twelfth at six PM.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Rege? Counselor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith, again.
This is a resolution to approve the sale of surplus property following the March second, twenty twenty-three surplus property auction.
I'll move that.
Second.
And any discussion?
Were these, how many were actually auctioned and these are the only two that sold?
No, there were other properties sold at the auction. These two properties were not among them, but these two properties did receive the minimum bid and the parties interested have actually provided the checks to the city. So typically, the past practice is if an offer, uh, meets the minimum bid, then it's brought to council in this form, and these two have. Perfect.
And it's never gone to public auction.
These have been auctioned. I'm, I'm happy to read the resolution if you want.
You are.
No, I was just, I was looking at twelve seventeen Ford Street. It's, I've got all those circle signs like, you know, like, condemned, don't go near it, condemned, uh, you know, it's lean and there's no roof left to it. It's, you know, it's actually a danger that we're selling this guy the property for three thousand dollars.
As is.
I know, but still it's.
We really need a policy on, that dictates on how surplus properties dealt with. Uh, one that, in my, in my opinion, you know, when it's acquired, how quickly there should be a public auction. Uh, what's the process for setting the minimum bid? And then when it fails to sell, what's the next step? Um, and in my opinion, there should be a second auction with a lower price.
Sure.
And what happens if that doesn't get met? What's the third auction?
Sure, at this moment, uh.
We just don't have a, a policy. Maybe I'm wrong, but, uh.
That's what we do though, I think. Try and sell it at auction if it doesn't go. We have the option of selling if somebody, yeah, somebody wants in. Sometimes we try a couple of times and I've seen us lower the price over and over again. I'm trying to get the, the new taker. Well, I've seen people walk away, but this last one's, this last one's the one we're talking about tonight, it's eleven years. I mean, it shouldn't be an eleven-year process. We might have lowered the price a couple of times, but it shouldn't take eleven years to do that. Twelve seventeen Ford Street?
He's talking about four twenty. A lot of the street. I think, you know, it shouldn't be an eleven-year process. It should be in writing a policy that, you know, is approved by the council on how these things are taken care of so that they don't, it doesn't end up being an eleven-year process. We're all, you know, it could be another two or three years.
I don't, I don't think that's accurate. Was, was that property cleaned up or the building demolished eleven years ago?
No, I was going to say, I'm, I'm happy to provide council of the timeline on that property. I don't know that it was accurately conveyed this evening, but.
And we were going to do an RFP on it. So you guys didn't want to do that, so now it's just sell it. Yeah.
Well, there's, there's a long history of that, I think, on how it was acquired and where it was purchased and what's what property it was.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there is a long history.
Yeah. Generally, I, I believe there is a policy still on the books that says that we don't have to acquire property like that if there are environmental, uh, issues with it. We seem to have done that on a regular basis with a number of problems.
So who would acquire it? For example, if there's an environmental issue, the same goes for someone. You know what I mean?
I mean, I'm pretty sure it's on the books there.
It's within city limits.
There's an opportunity where the city can decline to acquire. And of course, all this changes depending on the court case with the county over foreclosure, that's what.
Great.
Anyway, it's been five years since. Well, we don't get for eleven, I guess.
I'd like to see something. I'm sure there is, there is a process. And in addition, this time, we do plan to also bundle these unsold surplus properties and sell it at the surplus auction with the county, which draws a bigger, uh, wider audience.
They, they have good luck. Yes.
And that, that should be, you know, an amended policy for this one, not the policy.
Sure.
You know, but it should be, if that's your plan, then there should be a policy and the council should approve that policy.
Sure. I really make sure that comes into that discussion at the next council meeting. At the moment, I'd like to not slow down the selling of property. For this resolution, it's on, it's on itself.
Well, let's call the roll.
Did it sound like I was a hook? Well, I just didn't know what the point of the, because the talk, you got two properties in front of us. So that would have been the better conversation in the next resolution, obviously, I think.
So Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Rege?
Yes.
Counselor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Um, Andrea, I believe you're doing this one also, but, but I believe you have some very good news that maybe you could share with, uh, the people on residents in the council?
Sure.
Of the grant?
It's not really related to property sales per se, but, um, the city did receive an award of one point eight million dollars today for the demolition and remediation of the nine properties that comprise the cheese plant. And that is from New York State Empire.
Great job. Great job. You got two Restore New York grants.
We, we were recipients of six and seven as well as two, four and five.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. Yes, it's, uh, now you can go ahead.
Yeah, that's a, that is good news, so.
You think we all needed some good news, you know?
It's good news to sell the other two properties too.
Yes, yes.
Um, this is a resolution establishing an updated minimum price for surplus city-owned property and authorizing the city manager to hold a public auction. Steph has reviewed the following properties and recommend that the city council declare as surplus properties fit for public sale at the recommended minimum sale price.
I'll second.
This auction, uh, would be held at two PM on Wednesday, June seventh, here in the city council chambers.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, amend the resolution, um, in regards to four twenty Lafayette Street and setting the minimum recommended sale price, uh, down to ten thousand. Um, I think he's made some pretty compelling arguments and it, uh, has sat vacant for five years. We've only for eleven. I think it's, we have two interested citizens that want to acquire it and put it on tax rules. Um, so I would make that a motion.
So before you do, you know, I was in debate on that motion or taking it right off and there and selling it. Uh, because, I mean, I believe him, he's going to, he wants to invest in this. And, uh, and I think if we put this in the county auction at ten thousand dollars, citizens in Augsburg might not get it. And I'd rather see a guy in Augsburg get the property and do something with it myself, but.
I was only understanding at the last council meeting that seven twelve Moore Street was going to be on this agenda to be sold to the, the gentleman that came up to the podium and, and that, and then at the end of the conversation, that Mr. Bracy was also going to be taken care of. But, and then we've, we've got Mr. Kench now too. So I, I think both of those should come off and I think we should sell them both of them now.
Seven twelve, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
And it's, it's ten thou, it's five hundred dollars more on here than what the, that he stood up here and offered.
Yeah, I don't see that.
I would rather follow Dean's recommendation to go to a public auction. The reason why I can live with reducing it, getting involved in the process, because it is going to a public auction. And if, if the value is higher than that and someone will, will outbid them or they will bid higher, that's why you have a public auction. And that's why you should have a policy that, um, you know, if it doesn't sell the first time at a public auction, you have a second one and a third one. I don't think, uh.
We sat here with, we, we, these, these two gentlemen indications that, yeah, it was like, it was great. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you for buying the property. You know, getting it back on the tax rolls, wanting to develop, wanting to do something with it. Um, he was, I mean, he can't be much more than in his early twenties. I mean, it's, it's great to see kids that young that want to get in it. But it's not really fair to them and it's just like you're not having a policy.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, he, he sits, you know, he, these people, I mean, it's been on there twice. They've been going round and round trying, but it's like, uh, just fighting city hall.
So are you making a motion to take them both off?
Yes.
And sell them, and sell them tonight.
Yes.
I live me at, he was already in motion. I, I, I want that. That, that particular property had, there had been two other parties that has personally reached out to Andrea and offered fifteen thousand prior to that meeting. So that's why we, we.
Which, are you talking about four twenty Lafayette? Or five seven?
Five.
Moore Street? Moore Street, seven.
So we, we, I don't have a problem with any of these people acquiring the property. We support it, but we don't want down the line, somebody coming down and suing the city and suing them that we did something, uh, not right. That's why the most fair process is to go. I do support Councilman Rege's plan to reduce the price to ten thousand and put it on the public auction. Then give the chance and they would, and they would receive that. Other, rather than going and doing, you know, because if we do this now, we, we leave a bad precedence for the next.
And this is a city auction. This is not the county auction. This is just a city-based auction. This is not on the county, so.
I didn't realize there was more offers than seven twelve.
Uh, Dan, he agrees that it should go to public auctions.
All right. All right, so I'll rescind my second on yours.
Yeah, well.
And I will support the, uh, the reduction to ten thousand and let it, let it happen.
Counselor Scampely, would that be a second to Counselor Rege's motion?
That was the second to Counselor Rege's.
Thank you, sir.
He doesn't even know what he's seconding at this point.
No.
So that was 420 Lafayette.
So it is a motion to amend the minimum bid for 420 Lafayette Street to $10,000?
Yes.
Would you like a roll call to amend, Mayor?
Well, I think if you're gonna make them amend that one, you should amend the 712 Morris Street. He offered the 10, too. If we're gonna go with whatever his amended offer is, I think they should both go.
Problem is, he let the cat out of the bag, didn't somebody else put a 15 in?
Oh, okay.
So it's, I mean, if you're sitting out there as an investor or a developer, now it's like, well, wait a second. And now this, this 25-year-old kid that might have ended up doing 10 of them over his lifetime.
Right.
Why not do it?
I know.
Okay, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
So this is a roll called to amend?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Rege?
Yes.
Approved. And now as amended, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Rege?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
So I have a question on the process. So they have to actually be physically present in City Hall to bid on said properties?
That's how the auctions go, yes.
Well, I didn't know if those like.
They can send a proxy bidder, there is a form.
No, that's fine, I was just wondering if they had to be present. I knew with COVID, sometimes they did them like, I don't know if we were like, you know, remotely doing them or we're just in person.
In the 12 years that I've been here, we've always done them in person.
Perfect, even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business will be read by city manager. Mr. Bohari?
I am requesting a resolution of writing a contract for our services for a year, pretty much, through 2024.
Second.
Ken, any discussion?
I just wasn't sure, I didn't see other bids. Was there more bids?
There were two bids and they came very much higher. The second bid was much higher.
Okay.
I think I can get the controller to give me some of the breakdown. And for some reason, there is a many, there's a lot of companies that does this kind of government audits at this moment. So there are companies that's willing to do infrastructure development at all times.
Okay, so, so this is our break.
Close the clock for us.
So there is a shortage of this type of work in the industry right now, it is true. For lots of reasons, we do have two proposals on the table, the one that is included for approval. The other proposal was out of Williamsville near Buffalo and the three-year range on that went from $47,900 to $50,900, significantly higher. The budget price for 2021 audit was $22,000, I believe. So the current budget calls has a line item of $25,000. We will need to do a budget resolution in the subsequent meeting, once this is approved, to increase the budget line. There are also two independent agencies that have to do work in conjunction with this auditor. So there's about three professional firms that provide services in conjunction with that audit. Therefore, this current firm, Fush Charles, out of Syracuse, their price for the three-year contract starts at $37,000, not to exceed $37,000, will end at $39,500. So there will be a, should council accept this proposal, a budget modification also coming your way.
And how much worth of second bid is that?
Sure, the second bid that we had, their price was $47,900 for year one, $49,400 for year two, and $50,900 for year three.
Around 30 grand more.
Than we are currently at, correct?
Normally, there's like a bid tabulation that we're providing the information so we can make a decision about it.
Thank you, Angela. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Rege?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Approved.
And that brings us to old business, does anyone have old business?
Let's see if it's old or new here, let's see. I guess I'll go with the.
So I just wanna know, I wanna, I asked about, one of, one of the things I asked about was moving the monument, the memorial wall to Rupe Park. I know the veterans groups asked for it. I'm pretty sure Kathy was reaching out to them and I didn't know if they confirmed that they would like it moved down there.
Actually, if I may, I reached out to them in regards to the Memorial Day parade, sorry, I did not speak to them on the monument, just so you're, just so you know.
The one down in the mall parking lot?
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
They've, they've come and asked before.
Oh, have they?
So I just wanted to make sure, yeah, they've come and spoken and it seemed like a much more appropriate location for it. With all the other monuments. So I just wanted to confirm that and get it moved if they want it moved. I was trying to get on it before Memorial Weekend.
Counselor Scamperly, if I may? Andrea and I briefly discussed this with your approval, we'd like to look into it a little more. We do believe that that monument was placed there because when the moving wall visited Augsburg, it was displayed in that location. And there's also a bench put there near that memorial in memory of former school superintendent Hal Berry. That at his family's request was placed near that monument, so I don't think that. Yeah, yes, sir, I just say, I don't think it's, it's possible before Monday, but definitely something on our radar and Andrea and I would be happy with Shane's assistance to look into that.
Right, there may be some legal issues, but I think, see if they even want it there.
Understood. Understood.
All right, thank you.
Certainly.
And then on United Hoppers, have you had any clue?
Yes, I, myself and Pomp and Pots director and I'm director, we had a meeting to give them, suspended the meeting of August, the, with the resolution to recognize them. And they have, they are willing to come and invest with us. And they, I mean, they are basically willing to do such significant infrastructure development. So we will be, if we are going to do that, we'll have to go sewer and water services that will run towards Morris Town. And it's a significant investment. And I think, the way I looked at it is, there is a combined sewer system, which is right now causing some stress on our system. If we can't get their help on doing some mitigation somewhere else as, as we develop it, they have expressed their interest to, to work along with us, to help us as well as to help them. So it's kind of, but they wanted to make sure that before they move forward, it is, it is also a business interest. So they don't want to speak too much and expose themselves. They wanted to know is if the city council would be willing to support it for them to go forward because they have to spend a significant amount of money for the engineering and design drawings to come. And that is really, this, this project will involve lift stations, water, pressure stations, piping, as well as probably also build. And all these funds that they will be willing to.
Good, yeah, I think that one of the reasons we expanded this, this sewer, sewer project, besides being told to. And we're looking at our water project now, is try and expand for revenue. So, you know, I support that, definitely.
Well, they don't have a very good success rate. Bastas is gone, the adult home's gone, the nursing home's gone. I mean, you know, they didn't look to resell Bastas, they tore it down, that, that's, that's gone now. You know, it was, it was a nice business that made the difference in our community is, you know, I just say, you know, we've invested in water to all, all their places and they just keep closing them up.
So. Yeah, I need a lot more information. I mean, I don't know if we're talking about changing the policy on the outside user fee or if they would be willing to pay that because there's a lot of revenue that comes from the outside user fee.
They're gonna be paying us for the water and the sewer services which we are acquiring. So and then they will be also, at this moment, they will be also paying for the infrastructure, which will run into, I would say, about $10 million. The benefit to the city which I see is there are some areas in the city, like the main street, this area, where the combined sewer system has prevented businesses from opening up. So if we can mitigate that through this kind of funding, it will be encouraging businesses to come and open up rather than having to do significant infrastructure changes within the property.
On their own?
On their own.
Yeah.
On, yeah, yeah, so this is why, and, and also like, although Councilman Raj wants to know, you are, you would like to know more about it from their perspective, it is a business interest and they do not want to share a lot more that will compromise their business interests at this point. And this is, they have two divisions, they have a nonprofit division and a for-profit division. This would be doing the for-profit division and they did inform us that their for-profit is only now funding the nonprofit division because they haven't received the adequate funding from about 10 years from there, from ago. They used to receive almost 80% of their funding and now they have to come out with their own profits to run the.
So if we run a business, we run a business though too, we need to understand and make a decision, we need a lot more information.
Right, yes, yes. So to move forward, I mean, is there an appetite for them to, or you think we should push it? They can wait, I mean, they are willing to wait.
Great opportunity.
Yeah.
Especially if you're gonna help us with our combined sewer.
Right.
Which will attract more business, I mean, clearly they understand the outside user fee. They're a for-profit business, so, yeah, I mean, no brainer.
Some are, yeah, some of the discussions you might have.
Did you say that we're paying outside user fee?
I'm sure that they look at that and understand that you're for.
Well, that's the cash flow we need in writing.
That, that would be discussion, I think.
Well, we would need that in writing and that's the most important part of the thing, I mean, I, I don't know that, I mean.
Well, there's no details yet, they just wanna know if there's an appetite for them doing it, so sure, why wouldn't?
At the same time, I'd like to also add to this discussion for future construction projects to have water meters installed for brand new construction, for residential or for commercial, I mean, commercial, I think, we do have water meters, but, but I think for future new construction, we should have an established policy to have water meters installed because we want to understand the leaks in the system and going forward, maybe within 10, 15 years down the line, we would like to have all, all, all houses mated. So I would like to just bring that to your thoughts.
So New York State has already, basically, I think, told us we want to renew our water structure.
Right.
We need to start with major cities, and you know, how that's gonna happen? I don't know, but they took, said a few times already, we're gonna support water meters, but see what happens, I, I think definitely businesses or apartment buildings.
Yes.
You know, as a starter.
Well, at least if we have the meters, we know, we can have the same stuff right now, but at least we can understand what's the usage like and future somewhere down the line when it comes to metering and we have to charge them. Because at this point, the chlorination and all that stuff, the prices have gone up significantly and that's putting. And yeah, so in most houses, I mean, there could be one person or two person living and then some kids, they have like 10 people living. And the usage is safe and some of the, the rental properties I, I have been exposed to, they, they, they don't wanna fix that, because they, it's a black fee. So I'm just, I'm just bringing that discussion for consideration at the latter point, but at least we can stop the discussion.
We've had that discussion over again because of the landlords that just allow the leaks. I remember when Bill Nelson was mayor, that was a huge issue, they won't fix their leaks. So, a meter on them, it'll save the city, it'll save the entire city.
Okay.
Yeah, ones are ready. The docks, are we on schedule or when is it gonna be done? People are asking.
We have a sub.
Park looks wonderful.
Yeah, we have a substantial completion date that is end of this month.
End of May, end of.
June, sorry.
Andrea, I'm very impressed at how quickly you just got to the podium, I just wanted.
I really didn't want that to be wrong, sorry. The contract period for this project is one year, it's 365 days, which is going to expire on October 26th of this year. We do have milestone dates within the contract that call for certain aspects of the project to be completed, which does not necessarily mean open to the public by certain dates. So the playground is the first milestone date and that, that date is May 26th, which we are on track for. So that's, that is the schedule, we are on schedule. The substantial completion date is September 26th and we are just starting conversations with the state agencies to schedule our ribbon cuttings, which we're, which we're looking at September for that, for the park project as early as early July for our Maple City Trail project, which we are looking to do substantial completion on that at the end of June.
I was just wondering about the motors and the getting through there, will they be in the marina?
We have boats in the marina, May 1 was the opening date.
But it looks like.
There's still lots of construction in the area, but they are able to use the docks that are open this season.
Thank you.
Also, we are discussing about adding a couple of electric car charging stations in that area. Along with the structure development, so we can attract people to come to the city and spend some time in, while maybe charge their vehicles.
The charging station, I think, is an excellent idea because it's, right now, I think there's funding that they'll pay you to do it and I think just so you could actually make money off it. Instead of just having two down there, you should maybe consider somewhere closer to 6837 for their Canadian travelers or there's a few parcels of land right there on that main drag of Camp Street, which is right in the hub of where the shopping center and all the food, where they could charge their cars either on a quick one or not, the municipality could make the money off of it and then, and draws them in to go to the stores to eat the whole night and it's right there in that intersection, which is the busiest one we have coming through. So you get Messina, you get the border, you get them coming from Watertown towards Messina, Placard.
I mean, our initial inclination was to draw traffic to the city, that's why we.
But that is in the city?
Yeah, no, it went to the city, into this area where we can help the all area traffic. So but, but definitely that would be a consideration.
Well, now what you've got, Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, Burger King, Save-A-Lot, Sunoco.
Sure.
I mean, what do you have in this area to bring to? You know, I mean, I get seeing at the river, but you're gonna, people need to eat, you know, when they're here too.
Yeah.
Just for thought, I mean, if those parcels are open, the money's available, that would be, I think, would be an easy grant, I, I would imagine.
They have a couple of options on that, we are looking at the best option because also some of the, whether we wanna have a supercharger, whether we have a normal charger, so, and.
I think if you did a bank of both.
Yeah, we think we are going to, but also whether the grid can support, that's another big, big challenge is whether the grid can support. So, yeah, that's in the works, but definitely that location, the 6837, that area would be a place I would definitely do for comments. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Is there a, is there a? Is there a, okay, is there a, some kind of a cleanup going on at the Aspragachi Dam on Mill Street? I see there's containment things out there, tanks. Inside, outside? Well, we own it, so.
Yeah, I was going to ask myself. I had a phone call on it, so.
Probably should have some information on it. I believe we own it. They lease it from us.
I have, I have, I'll have to look into this. I don't know much about it.
And I brought up before about the oil spill in the town of Aspragachi next to our water intake that's being cleaned up and asked for information on that, never got anything. And it'd be nice to know what the status is and be assured that, you know, our water intake is safe and it's going to be safe in the future. Because there's D E C cleanup trucks there and a lot of equipment that it's like, and a lot of it's been moved already. So I don't know. It's just nobody seems to want to talk about it. It'd be good if the city chamber could do something with the signs that Mr. Coates brought up. Actually, my son and I painted them the last time. We painted the backs of the posts, not the actual sign itself. Probably four or five years ago, it was a project for him for scouts. But, I mean, I don't know, it's our responsibility and I don't know about the service clubs. They put those up. That's probably their responsibility. Maybe someone should reach out and coordinate with them. But yeah, it should be, should be looked at for sure. I'd love to have a huge welcome dog work sign by every location that I think we can afford.
I have, I have a look on it. At the same time, it's talking about signs. The county administration informed they are working on the B M V sign and it should be here soon, as maybe this month.
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time.
Hopefully this week.
Hopefully, yeah.
Items for discussion. This brings us, we will begin with Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
So last week, the CFAs were announced, this year's consolidated funding applications. So I did just include a table of, provides fifteen options. Not all of them are CFAs. In fact, the very first one, which is the New York State Urban and Community Forestry, is not a consolidated funding application grant that was actually announced on Arbor Day this year, April twenty-eighth, and those applications are due June twenty-first. And our Recreation Director and Tree Commission have been looking at that grant and talking to Steve Sherwood, who is our regional forester, and are going to be bringing a resolution to council on June twelfth to apply for funding to update our tree inventory and management plan, which is approaching the ten-year date. So that's when we should be looking to update that. So we are looking to apply and that application, again, it would be due on June twenty-first. The majority of the other programs are through the consolidated funding application process and the deadline for those is July twenty-eighth. I believe that's a Friday at four P M. If your printout is in color or if you looked at it in color, I have made a couple notes in red by various funding sources and programs where they may align with projects that we've talked about in the past. But I did want to also just bring to your attention that the second application, which is for vac trucks, I'm working with our director, Shane Brown, to determine if we are eligible for that program. We, we may not be because we have a combined storm sewer system, but we are trying to really definitively find out whether or not we can apply or not. If we can, obviously, that's a great funding source for funding a vac truck for the Department of Public Works and our water and sewer plants. So the intent of this is really just to kind of give council an overview of some of the things that are on our radars and let you know that staff is looking at these. And obviously, there's quite a bit of work that will go into putting them together and get council's thoughts on what things are on your minds to make sure that we are bringing you what you want to see in terms of actual applications. Many of these do require public hearings and/or resolutions of support. And so we really will need to start working on these pretty quickly, even though they were only just announced. And it seems like summer isn't even quite here yet. The deadline of the twenty-eighth will be here before we know it, so. Just wanted to kind of get council's high-level feedback and then again, let you know that you'll be hearing more about these at subsequent meetings over the next couple, couple of months.
The downtown revitalization initiative, I think that was funded in this year's budget.
That was also announced. It's not on this particular list, but that is open for funding again this year.
And maybe instead of that, Andrea, since we haven't had much success with it, we should look at the New York Forward Grant. Maybe that would be more appropriate for a community our size.
Yeah, I have to look at that for this year because in the past, last year, we didn't qualify for that, but I'll certainly look to see if there are any changes for this year.
And also, Andrea, can you give us an update on the member items? Waiting on.
Well, we applied for four member item grants to Congress on the Lee Stefonics office and none of them were selected for funding, but I didn't bring the details on that. I believe I did provide that in a memo. I'm happy to do it again. But none of those were awarded. We also did submit projects to Senator Schumer and Jill Lebrun.
I, I think we should try to do as many as we can. I know it's, you know, the staffing is an issue, but the county tonight in their meeting passed the higher dank for thirty-five hundred bucks, right? There's C D B G grants, so, you know, so there's, there's possibilities out there. We could flood the grant market. You know what I mean? And the way we're heading, it looks like those, that's about the only way you got out of this. So that's, that's, that's probably going to end up being money well spent. So I think we need to look at that as an option too.
I have talked to the Development Authority, talked directly to Michelle Capone about that. And, I mean, they are interested in working with the city and she does feel like there have been some changes and that we could, with some success, apply for a community-wide program, which wouldn't require us upfront to identify a neighborhood, which is what the city's done in the past, although we would have to do outreach and prepare case studies and provide applications from potentially interested parties. The C D B G Housing Rehabilitation Program is targeted at low to moderate income households, whether the renter or owner is based on how you put your application together, but it, it's not available citywide. It is income-based.
But it's nice that, you know, that they're doing it and they've had pretty good success for it. So I think we should probably get on that same train.
And Andrea, I want to say a big thank you to you for all the hard work you do, especially with the amount of pressure you have to deal with from me, but very, and I really appreciate you doing. And I think we should, we should recognize Andrea at one of the council meetings, especially dedicating some, some real special motion to recognize Andrea Smith for her contributions.
That, that will not be necessary.
Three million dollars.
Well, topic of grants, I didn't know if we had any updates on the cops grant.
Cops grant, I, I, I asked Chief Kuns to come up and give us an update on the cops grant.
I just didn't know when we were expected to hear anything or.
We won't hear anything on that until September or October.
Okay.
This item for discussion that was brought up before about a mandatory charter review commission prior to December thirty-first of this year. And that someone had amended the charter. They changed it from ten years down to six or seven years. I don't have all the details. And also changed it to say that if you didn't do it, then you don't have a charter, which, you know, I don't know if that's accurate. I haven't looked at it. I'm just bringing it up, you know, just to mention it. I mean, obviously, we can't do that. I don't know why that amendment that was made. I mean, the charter is the operating criteria, how you run your government.
Think I voted against it.
So, so I'm just suggesting that, you know, I don't think there's time to do a charter review commission between now and the end of the year.
I think you just have to get a start.
I, yeah.
If I, if I may.
Yeah, I'd like to ask.
Could I just finish? Sorry about that. So I was just going to suggest that maybe we should look at changing that back to its original without the amendment so that it's, it's an automatic ten-year review without any penalty where the charter disappears. So that, that would seem reasonable to me and something for everybody to think about as a way of addressing it.
I thought this picture was too, too tight, so I think I'm pretty sure I voted against it. I might have been the only vote, no. Doesn't matter, that's what I was going.
I think that was, that's a good idea, John. There's, there's just so much to do with this budget. We have to get these things right, so.
It's easier to do a, a simple change.
Yeah.
Than it is to go through all the motions.
So maybe we could work, work on a resolution for the next meeting possibly?
It would actually be a resolution to call for a public hearing. Any amendments made to, the most amendments made to the charter are done by local law. So we can gear that up to call for the public hearing with the local law. And just to clarify, the language in the charter right now says that if council fails to establish a charter review commission by December thirty-first, that all powers of city council shall cease with the exception of the power to appoint a charter review commission. So just to clarify, that's, that's what it says, but we'll get that geared up for sure. Understood.
You gotta have some power.
We'll, we'll get that geared up for the next meeting to start that process.
Thank you. Are we at citizen participation or is there more? Okay. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come up to the podium. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Jennifer Stevenson. I'd like to offer two solutions to Mr. Coates' awareness of our city signs. I too noticed them the last couple of weeks. So I am the treasurer of the Rotary Club and our president Debbie Jansen is sitting here also. Initially, when those signs for the service clubs were put up, the Rotary Club initiated that with Marty Murphy being our city planner at the time and him also being a member of the Rotary Club. So I would like to go ahead and call a meeting of the service clubs and see what we can do about jazzing those signs up, doing some corrections to those. We also had help from the D P W as far as the installation of the signs, so we may have to come back to the city and ask for some help with straightening them, some of the heavy lifting in that manner, but I will go ahead with them and we will call that meeting of the service clubs to see what we can do there. And then, thank you, Mr. Rees, for mentioning about your son doing the painting for his scout project, I believe you said, or community service project. So I would like to offer, since the signs are blue posts, so what better than to have Blue Heron Realty? Go ahead and paint those posts and do the corrections to those. So I will reach out to the Chamber of Commerce because they were initially the ones that facilitated that and I will volunteer our services to take care of that with an idea that we would be able to finish that by July first so it would look nice for the summer. So I will go ahead and do that unless anyone has any opposite or better ideas for that.
It's a great idea. Thank you very much.
We will take you up on that. We will go ahead and take care of that then. Thank you.
Yes, my tool again. Just a little history. I served on two charter commissions and it was the second charter commission that I sat on that established some of the language of the, that the the city clerk just read. Between the, the, the time period between my first charter commission and the second charter commission was twelve years. The charter said it was supposed to be a committee established within ten years. It wasn't, it took twelve years before the, the next charter commission was established. So with that charter commission, we proposed language to the charter, to the council at that time that said that if you don't appoint within ten years, then city council at the end of ten years can't do anything before they appoint a charter commission. So it's an attempt to stay on course, ten years, ten years, ten years, and that's why that language is there. A little history.
Is there anyone else? Anyone attending remotely?
The first individual is registered as Greg McNamara and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, sir. Mr. McNamara, it appears you are self-muted. Not sure how you wish to proceed, Mayor.
Do you have others?
I do not. Do they? I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay.
I didn't hear what he said. I'm sorry.
We'll move on.
Mr. McNamara has called in in the past, so he, I, I believe he is familiar with how the platform works. However, he may be experiencing technical difficulty, but he is, he is self-muted. I've already unmuted him.
Okay, so we'll move on. Now I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Doesn't say, doesn't say yes or no.
I don't know.
Okay, you don't know? So I need a second though.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the role?
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Rees?
Yeah.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved. So just to clarify for the record, council does intend to. Come back. Understood. Of course you can, there you are.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.